I'd like to start us off with a land acknowledgement. On behalf of the Seattle Planning Commission, I'd like to humbly recognize that we are gathered on indigenous land, the traditional ancestral and unceded territories of the Coast Salish people. We thank the caretakers of this land who've lived and continue to live here since time immemorial, and acknowledge the role that traditional Western-centric planning practices have played in harming, displacing, and attempting to erase Native communities. We respect Indigenous rights to sovereignty and self-determination, and we commit to being better listeners, learners, and to lifting Indigenous voices while identifying racist practices and continuing to to practice allyship and strive to center restorative land stewardship rather than unsustainable and extractive use of the land. Just in a few quick announcements to members of the public and any visitors. Welcome. We are happy to make all commission meetings open to the public, but please note that the Planning Commission does not hold public hearings since the commission is an advisory body. We provide recommendations to elected leaders that in turn make the actual decisions. We encourage individuals and organizations to provide their comments appropriately directly to elected officials. This meeting is a hybrid meeting with some individuals participating remotely, while others are participating in the boards and commissions room in Seattle City Hall. I'd like to take us to our brave space norms. And as you saw on the agenda, we're going to be talking about talking about our paper on investing in Seattle's future and talking about some commission business. So, holding that thought, I'd love to ask a commissioner to choose one of these to help us hold in our hearts as we move through our work together today. Obviously, all of these are important, but is there one that someone would like to highlight for us? This is our favorite awkward pause until someone volunteers or gets it voluntold.
Jamie, I can pick one.
Thank you, Nick.
Yeah, so why not let's do notice and shift racialized power dynamics? I think this color brave space norm, as we're talking about budget in our page or in our paper, kind of pushes us for some intentional examination of some of the adjustment of power and equity and how we're prioritizing city budgets. So I think that this one is kind of apt for today's conversation.
Thanks, Nick. If there are no amendments or modifications or any extra things folks would like us to think about, I suggest that we all agree to these norms. Okay, so as I mentioned earlier, we have two agendas items today. One is our final discussion on the commission's invest in Seattle's future paper and then some other commission business. To kick us off, I'd like to approve our meeting minutes from September 12th. So from our last commission meeting, can I ask for a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved. This is Michaela.
Thanks, Michaela. In a second.
Next seconds.
Thank you, Nick. Any changes or amendments? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you all. Just some other reminders about upcoming commission meetings. Next Thursday, October 3rd is the next Housing in Neighborhoods meeting. It's scheduled from seven, I believe that's 7:30 to nine, not seven to 9:30. That would be a very long meeting. Seven thirty to nine AM. Our next full commission meeting is scheduled for October 10th from three to five thirty. That meeting will also be hybrid format with options for meeting in person at the boards and commissions room in Seattle City Hall or online using MS Teams platform. With that, I will pass it to Vanessa for some announcements.
Thank you so much, Jamie, and sorry about the typo in the chairs notes there. As Jamie did note, this is a hybrid meeting. All commissioners present on the call are actually on the call. Commission staff is here in the boards and commissions room. We do not have any members of the public joining us in the room at this time. We do have one on the call. During the meeting, there will be opportunities for commissioners to ask questions and provide comment. Please put your name in the chat to be recognized by the chair to speak. And just a reminder to please not put substantive comment in the chat as individuals who may be calling in to listen to our meeting do not have access to the chat. If I had received any public comment, I would be reading them shortly, but I have not received any thus far. So we invite any members of the public present at the meeting to offer public comment. As I mentioned, there are none. And a reminder that we take public comment at the beginning and at the conclusion of our meetings. I'll turn it back to Jamie to start commissioner introductions. After introducing yourself, please call on fellow commissioner to introduce themselves. If you are unable to see who's on the call, just mention that and staff will jump in and help you. So back to you, Jamie.
So, welcome, everyone. I'm Jamie Strobel. I use she/her pronouns. I live in the future 130th Station area and work in climate change and environmental justice and policy. And if you are so willing, if you can, please add your favorite fall beverage. Optional question, just because I'm sitting here with a warm cup of tea and that's how I'm feeling very hot tea. Right now, it's a London fog is what I'm drinking, so I will pass to Michaela.
Good morning, Michaela Daffer, and she/her pronouns. I live in Capitol Hill and I work in affordable housing policy and planning. And my beverage, favorite beverage, does not change throughout the year, and it is a cup of coffee. And I will pass it to Nick.
Good morning, Nick Whipple. You see him pronouns. I live in the West Seattle area and North Dell Ridge neighborhood. For my day job, I'm a city planner on the east side. And like Michaela, my drink kind of stays constant, so I like a good Americano. How about Lauren?
Hi, everyone. Lauren Squires, she/her. I live in the Mount Baker Light Rail Station area and I work at King County Metro. I lead the Connecting to Trans program there. And I've switched to chai for the fall, for the cozy vibes, cozy spicy vibes. Andy, do you want to go next?
Yeah, Andy Denenberg, he/him, live in Northeast Seattle. I teach at University of Washington in public health and in urban planning and drink coffee every morning. Let's see. Matt, did you go? I'm not keeping track very well.
You're on mute, Matt.
We have two Mads, so how about we start with Matt Hutchins and we can go to Matt Malloy after that.
Still not.
There we go. Sorry about that. I thought I hit the button. My name is Matt Hutchins. I am an architect. I live in West Seattle. And for me, it's a hot double shot of espresso. Let's see, how about the other Matt?
Yeah, I'm the other Matt. I'll go by Matthew today, he/him pronouns. I work at the Queen Anne Beer Hall and today is my first day subbing at Billings Middle School this year. Really excited to see the kids again. And my favorite beverage, I'm not really very excited when it comes to beverages, so I like a lemony tea, I suppose. And I'll pass it to Dylan. Have you gone?
How about Dylan G? We have two Dylans and two Mads.
Yeah, hey, guys. This is Dylan Losaki. I use he/him pronouns. I am an architect and urban designer, Perkins Eastman in downtown Seattle. Mostly multi-family realm, but also with some transit-oriented development type work and neighborhood planning. And I live in Central District. And I guess, are we talking morning beverages? Maybe I'll just give two quick ones. If it's like a morning beverage, I've got really into Cortados recently. But if we're talking evening beverages, then in the fall, I usually switch from IPA to Porters. And we'll go with the other Dylan, Dylan S.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm Dylan Stevenson, he/they pronouns. I live in the Belltown neighborhood and for my day job, I teach Indigenous planning amongst other things at the University of Washington in the Urban Planning Department. And generally, I think my favorite beverage is like fresh lemonade with two shots of espresso. It's kind of controversial, but I really love it. So if you're feeling of interest, I would recommend it. And I will choose to hand it off to Cecilia Black.
Good morning. My name's Cecilia Black and I am a community organizer and organize people with disabilities around transportation and housing. And I live in the Roseville neighborhood, right next to the Roseville Station. And my favorite beverage for the fall is definitely hot chocolate. And I will pass it off to Dehanya.
Hi, everyone. Good morning. I'm Diana Quintanet. I live in Capitol Hill. I use she/her pronouns. And I'm a multimodal transportation planner. And for fall beverages, I also love a chai. And if it's in the morning, probably a dirty chai with one shot of espresso. And I don't know who's left. Vanessa, if you can.
How about Caleb?
Good morning. My name's Caleb Tolda, he/him pronouns. I live in Beacon Hill. I work at Rainier Stollers as an educator. And favorite fall beverage, usually still black coffee, but sometimes dabble with some roebus tea. And I'll pass it off to staff. Vanessa?
Thank you. Thank you, Caleb. Actually, if I will pass it to Radhika and then we'll go with staff.
Oh, my bad.
Good morning, Radhika. No worries.
Hi, everyone. I'm Radhika Narayana. I use she/her pronouns. I live in Fetswood in North Seattle and I'm an urban planner. And I'm also like a pretty constant coffee drinker. And I'll pass it back to staff.
Yeah, good morning, everyone. Olivia Baker, I use she/her pronouns, and I'm staff to the commission. And I also drink coffee most mornings, but in the fall, I like to have at least one glass of apple cider at some point. Got to do it. John?
Good morning, everybody. I'm John Hoy, staff to the planning commission. I use he/him pronouns, and I am a year-round coffee drinker. Robin?
Rob, Robin McGonigal, out here on Vashon Island, staff to the commission. And like Matt Malloy, I have a favorite morning drink, which is Irish breakfast tea. And I consistently drink that every morning. And in the evenings, since I've been back from Ireland, I like, I found that I like a beer called Kill Kenny, which is a sort of, it's a cream ale, basically, that's made by Guinness. And that's my evening drink. Vanessa?
Morning, everyone. I will round us off. My name is Vanessa Murdock. I use she/her pronouns. I'm staff executive director of the commission. And like many on the call, I am a year-round coffee drinker, sometimes black, sometimes sometimes with milk, but I definitely need coffee to get going in the morning. So thanks for that prompt, Jamie. And with that, I will turn it back to you.
Great. Thank you all for participating in that. I'm going to move us just to a couple announcements quickly about public comment. The commission provides time for public comment at all meetings. A reminder that we do not hold public hearings in our advisory body. We make recommendations to elected leaders who in turn make the actual decisions and individuals who make comments to the commission should remember that the mayor and city council make the decisions. We encourage individuals and organizations to provide their comments appropriately to elected officials. And Vanessa, do we have any public comment today?
We do not. There is the option to email me a public comment in advance of the meeting or to join us in the boards and commissions room. Nothing was emailed to me and we have no members of the public present. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Vanessa. All right, with that, we're going to move on to our investing in Seattle's future discussion. So Planning Commission staff are going to walk us through one last time the paper that we have been working on for the last several months. This paper is to help inform the upcoming city council deliberations of the mayor's proposed budget. The intent of the paper is to inform members of the public and provide suggestions on how to become involved in the budget process. The development of this piece has been iterative and may not reflect comments made earlier in the process as the intent and audience has continued to evolve and change over the course of the last several meetings. In the interest of finalizing a document in a timely manner so as to inform the budget, staff is suggesting a discussion today that does not introduce new content and/or take the paper in a different direction. And we have 30 minutes set aside for this final discussion. And with that, I will hand it over to Olivia.
Thanks, Jamie. Hi, everyone. So we are going to dive into this version that you've seen for about a week now. I think we sent out the draft last Thursday evening. And I also just sent out a version to everyone's inbox just ahead of the meeting. And you'll see that there's a little bit of difference between the two. And that's because the version that I just sent out is marked up with a few recommended changes that staff have put forth, just based on actually finally seeing the budget, which came out this Tuesday. So we are proposing a few little tweaks to adjust for that. But so my plan is I'll give you a little overview. I will walk through the draft that I just sent, and then we will do a five-minute review for you all to take a look before we jump into a discussion. So just as a refresher, you know, we've been talking about this for several months. As I just said, the major post-budget was released this Tuesday, September 24th. We're reviewing a sort of final draft today, minus any tweaks that we make. And then we as staff are hoping to be able to publish this out sometime next week. So that's our timeline that we're working on. And that's, you know, this timeline is to get ahead of or get, you know, right sort of in the middle of council budget deliberations, which have just started, which will be going on through till early November. And just a refresher again, I know not everyone has been able to attend all the meetings, so you've probably popped in at different times in different iterations. But our goal right now for this piece is to kind of help more people understand the importance of the annual budget process in relation to long-range planning outcomes and, you know, to really encourage more people to just get involved in the budget process this year and to pay attention to a few topics that we're highlighting for them. And the audience that we're focusing on are really members of the public who are interested in the comprehensive plan or the city's affordable housing crisis, but haven't really been involved in the budget process in the past. So it's sort of a like, welcome to the budget process and, you know, here's how to get involved. All right, so before I jump into the individual review, I am going to share PDF and run through a few changes. There with me. Hopefully, you're all seeing that now. Let me get a snitch bigger. Okay, so you'll see from the last time that we had a, you know, full commission meeting, we've moved this into more of a layout, sort of like a final layout stage, it's not a Word document anymore. So the formatting is a little different. And the first page is pretty tight, I'll admit, but there was a lot of things we wanted to fit up top. So from the version that you all received last week, you might notice that some of the links have been updated. There was a lot of stuff moving around on the city website and on the mayor's page. So I had to kind of track down a few links that had changed. So if you noticed they were broken, they should be fixed now. You'll also see on this version that we have some different graphics. Those are compliments of Zio. She was able to get some sort of line drawings in for us to make the paper a little more visually appealing. And so Zio's not here today, but big thanks to Zio. And you can give her a thanks the next time you see her in person or at a meeting. Nothing big to spare changing on the first page. But on the second page, I did want to draw your attention to some of the text that I've highlighted here. This first piece is just noting a change in the amount of money that the budget gap has been tied to. And that's just pulling a figure out of the actual budget proposal that came out. And then I've also highlighted some text at the bottom that was added after the last meeting. There was a request from one of the commissioners to add a little more context about, you know, to provide some examples of the sort of strides that have occurred in the last few years around affordable housing and anti-displacement work based on, you know, the sort of shift in funding towards these concepts since 2020. And so I just wanted to note that I, you know, I think that's a good idea to include. But to do it, the only way I can really think about how to do it was to include specific references to a few programs. So specifically naming the Office of Housing here and the Equitable Development Initiative. And that's a shift in sort of procedure from what we had discussed at previous meetings, where we talked about not naming any specific programs. So I think this, these two sentences are sort of up for debate. And I'd love to hear folks' thoughts on whether we should include them or remove them, or perhaps if people have a good idea for how to kind of include the sentiment, but not name specific programs. I'm all ears on that. I think I saw a hand raised. Sorry, I can't see you all. Yes, Andy, go ahead.
Just very quick, I was just surprised the title does not include the word housing. Was that intentional?
We did go over a lot of different title discussions at, was that Housing in Neighborhoods? I can't recall now which meeting that was, or was it an executive committee meeting?
I think it was an executive committee meeting that followed the last full commission meeting.
Okay, thanks, Vanessa. Sorry, I couldn't quite remember when. But yeah, we did sort of throw around a lot of different titles and workshop it. And this is what folks came up with. I think, you know, there was a desire to focus on this concept of investing in Seattle's future and tying that to the budget. But there wasn't a discussion to specifically address housing. I don't know if anyone who was at that conversation wants to weigh in or... Michaela, go ahead.
Just wanted to reiterate that we did look at a lot of options and kind of went through a pretty thorough process. I think the reason it's broad is because equitable development projects don't just, aren't just housing projects always. Displacement concerns of communities include cultural displacement, of, you know, displacement of different cultural centers, as well as businesses that help identify a culture, help reinforce a cultural identity for a community. So since we're talking about both housing and equitable development, I think the, my, what was guiding me in those conversations was keeping it broader so it could encompass all the things that result in equitable development in Seattle.
Thanks, Michaela. Seeing some thumbs up.
I think that's also why we have it in some of the subheaders. So if you look at the blue line, it gets a little more specific of like funding affordable housing and community-led anti-displacement work. So it was hard to fit all the words in the title, so that's kind of why.
I'm going to keep moving on the edits that I want to draw your attention to, but we can definitely circle back if folks want to after when we get to discussion. All right, so yes, we need to read through. Go ahead and take a look at this highlighted section here. And then on the top of page three, this is where we get into some suggested changes from staff based on just what we were actually seeing in the budget. We as staff haven't had the chance to really do a super thorough read-through of the budget since it did just come out on Tuesday afternoon. But as some of you may have seen in some press coverage, it's already out. Or if you've had the chance to read any overviews, the budget does not make any cut. The proposed budget that is from the mayor does not actually make any cuts to affordable housing funding or to like the Equitable Development Initiative or work programs doing anti-displacement work. And in fact, they have been slightly increased from the 2024 budget. So we're suggesting a slight shift in sort of tone in this section from, you know, sort of a call to action to fight against budget cuts to more of a, you know, a maintain and protect funds for affordable housing and anti-displacement work and sort of a call to monitor that within the budget process and to support those programs. So it's more of a suggestion that folks keep an eye on those pieces and don't let them be sort of cut down for other programs and policy priorities that might come up during council deliberation. So you'll see in the comments, if I can pull it up, I'm not sure if it'll show me here while I'm sharing with you all. There is a comment bubble on this section that has some potential text to replace it with for you to consider. So we're proposing a line that goes, "The mayor's proposed budget maintains and slightly expands funding to affordable housing and anti-displacement work as compared to the 2024 budget. As city council deliberates on the final budget, it is important to ensure that these funding levels are held steady or increased and are not decreased to fund other programs and policies." So that's some suggested text to go in place of this red text that's removed. And we're also recommending that we remove the pie chart graphic and, you know, it's supporting text just because it's not quite as relevant to that message and might actually distract from the current budget process, given that it gets into specifics on numbers and is using numbers from the 2024 budget, which might confuse people. So those are the recommended changes. I'm proposing that we keep this text piece on the side that talks about, you know, where funding comes from and the need to sort of maintain every dollar that the city can. But it would be moved just into sort of a regular paragraph and not italicized. Yeah, so those are the main changes that you'll see. So with that, I think I will move to giving you all five minutes to review, and then we'll jump into discussion. So let's see, if you come back at eight, let's say eight twenty. And again, that should be in your inbox. You should see that latest version. Okay, so that was about five minutes. I'll have everyone come back if you're ready. And.
Okay, so we have a queue set up. We've got Lauren, or sorry, Matt, and then Lauren.
Yeah, let's see. So with regards to the eliminating the pie chart, because it's, because it illustrates as a percentage basis, not as in an, like a, it's not dollars. The, I think it's still quite appropriate to show, show it as a percentage because the percentage that is going to go towards affordable housing and anti-displacement will actually be reduced under this, this budget. And so I, I don't think that it's actually, you know, because we are using the Jump Start tax to pay, pay for changes or increases in the general fund or the deficit, that $250 million deficit. It does reduce the percentage. I don't think it's fair to eliminate that, this, this chart. I also don't think that it is appropriate to talk about how, if we're talking about percentages, it's, 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 it would be going down. It doesn't make sense to insert this language about affordable housing investments going up unless we're throughout the paper, you know, talking about money in absolute terms. Oh, and also in the first, second bullet point, housing appendix should be capitalized.
Got it. And just to clarify, Matt, when you're talking about, it's not appropriate to say that it's going up, are you referring to the language in the comment? Like the suggested replacement text?
Yes, yes, because I think that that glosses over the fact that we're, we're, since Jump Start is a proportional tax that allocates money to affordable housing based on a percentage basis, the fact that the, the total tax is growing up, but are, we're reducing the percentage that we're investing in affordable housing. I just don't think that it's, it behooves us long-term to, to not highlight that, or to gloss over the fact that, yes, it may be going up slightly in, in dollars, but it's going down in terms of percentage of annual, of actual the city budget.
Thanks, Matt.
Sorry, can I just jump in real quick? Did you say, Matt, it will go down in, in terms of real dollars? And of course, then therefore also as a percentage? Did I hear you right?
Yeah, if, because Jump Start is, is overperforming. It's more than what we were, what we, what we had been modeling. And therefore, I think it was, it was on track to maybe garner, you know, around 200 million. But it's, but because it's overperforming, that percentage that would have gone, the 62% that is allocated for housing, affordable housing, it would have been much more. And instead of applying that, that money to enlarging our stock of affordable housing, the budget currently would take that, that unanticipated, I guess, surplus, yeah, and divert it to plug other holes in the budget.
I see. Thanks for, thanks for clarifying.
Olivia, you have what you need for that particular.
I hear, I hear Matt's point. I understand what he's saying. I'd love if there's time or if others have thoughts, a discussion on how best to address the discrepancy and how much detail we want to get into. Because it's a discussion of, you know, sort of real dollars spent overall versus funding sources. And we could get into general fund versus payroll expense tax funds. And so it could get quite complicated. So I'd love thoughts on how to sort of strike that balance of accuracy, but not details that are sort of over folks' heads, especially for the size of the paper that we have.
Okay, my, my suggestion would be to just eliminate the first sentence there on this page. And, but leave the, leave the pie chart.
Okay.
Is there a way to make the pie chart, like, show a dotted line of like what the percentage of the budget was? And now what's being proposed to show that decrease in proportionality overall? Because I think that's what we're getting at. The, the key is that we need to at least sustain the same amount of funding, I think proportionately to the city's programs. You know, and if that's, if that is showing a shrinking, I think there's a way to maybe layer in another kind of dotted line.
Just to, and I, and I will defer to who, to our chair or Vanessa who's moderating. You know, if we are discussing this right now, or should I put my name in the chat? Because I think Matt's point about the maintaining is what the, you know, what we need to communicate, whether it's in words, you know, maintaining the proportion, the relative proportion, I think, is what we're saying. If that is what we're trying to do, then that is, that is a message that is not communicated in our current draft. Where I was coming from last time when I commented about including the pie chart is, you know, it is just not helpful to show a pie chart where we're not actually showing the source of, of our chart, meaning how did we actually account for what is in the 94% versus the 6%? And I believe there was some discussion about, you know, we, we made those determinations with our best understanding of what programs are dedicated to affordable housing and anti-displacement, but they might not be exhaustive. So it might not be a fair representation of how the city might themselves characterize the spending. At least that's how I remembered the conversation. But there was perhaps not a willingness to, from the commission to necessarily put absolute dollars in that. And I felt that if we included a chart, we needed to show our work. And if that wasn't something that could fit in this paper, then I kind of felt like putting a number that doesn't allow people to actually track back, especially for example, support staff to, you know, assisting decision makers on this, you know, may, may not then be as helpful.
I'm gonna just jump in here and say, can we return to the queue? Because I want to make sure that we have time to get to folks who dropped their names into the chat. So, so that way, if we, if you have comments on this particular graph or anything, just add your name. We'll circle back around to you. So Lauren, was your, did you already address your comment when you jumped in or did you have?
No, I have some other comments. But yeah, to close the loop on the chart, just I think the proportionality, I think the caption does a good job in talking about the sources of that funding. And I really appreciate how the paper, kind of particularly in the lower part of page three, kind of talks about the puzzle of funding needed. And again, this is about the city budget and our need to invest in the vision. And if the proportion of city budget is shrinking on affordable housing, we are not investing in the vision. My comments specifically are just about kind of bolding some of the key sentences in the paper. I really appreciate the paper. We're fitting a lot in and it kind of reads as a wall of text right now. And I just think if we can maybe bump up a few of the key kind of phrases. Can I, man, I can share my screen with the whole commission. Wow. Okay, so I'm just proposing kind of some of these orange highlights here where, you know, I think we should bold the lead sentence. The commission is concerned about Seattle's housing affordability crisis. Like that would catch someone's eye. And then if we could maybe bold the first sentence of each of these dot points and maybe move some of these latter up to the front, like change moves slowly. We need to start now with sustained funding in the future, period. Decisions on this budget cycle will set our path for implementing. Housing is, especially affordable housing is fundamental. So just if someone only read the bold points, they would get the gist of the paper. This statement, "The city cannot slow down on investments in affordable housing and preventing displacement when the need is still great and progress is at last being made." I think that should be like a tagline that, let's, let's bump that up because that, and maybe that should just go right here above the how the budget process impacts the vision. And this could be three sentences, three punchy sentences. Still great, period. Progress is at last being made, period. To build the future, we collectively imagine we need to invest now. That's like the main thing that we're saying in this. And I think that it should go kind of right up top there. This is an awesome graphic. I would suggest maybe moving this, the 112,000 net units needed. I would, I kind of read this top to bottom and this didn't, I wasn't sure if this was all the gray or the gray and the green and the blue. So maybe this could just go along the side to be like, all of this is 112,000 new units. And, you know, the, this proportion needs to be 30%, this proportion needs to be 80%. So that just was like a little visual thing for me that if maybe we could find a way to have that be all of the, just indicating all of the bands. Again, another really great statement that I think could be just bumped up a little bit. And then again, just like these top sentences, just bolding those. The gap in housing supply is directly related to negative outcomes we see. As the city leadership builds the budget, they need to find a, address the gap of 1251 million. This is what we just talked about, but I think that this statement, the estimated need is 30 billion. That can just be bolded. And again, the city must continue to support programs that are working on the complex puzzle. That is the kind of bold statement that gets at the rest of this text. And then I think this closing statement of our collective vision is at risk. So that could just be, so those were just kind of my suggestions on like, if someone just only read those statements, they would get the entire gist of the, of the paper. And I love this blue section, but to save some space, I don't think we need to say, like, we need to invest in the vision because that's the whole thing. But it can just be like, get involved by going to these links. So just a few, just kind of tactical, like scannable options. But we're saying so much great stuff in this paper and I really appreciate everyone's work on it. And it's going to be very timely to release it. So appreciate you all.
Thanks, Lauren. Andy, you're up next.
Yeah, just a quick comment on the end, that a paper like this usually ends in an ask and trying to see what the ask is, it seems to say, support housing, get involved. And do we want any more specific ask of, you know, dollar figures or programs to be expanded? Or something a little more specific than just a general support housing and get involved?
Great. Thank you, Andy. Michaela?
Because I just went right after Andy's question. I think if I'm reflecting back on many, we've had so many conversations about this. But I think that we were hesitant to sort of start to try and put dollar figures around a budget we hadn't seen and to get into the fray of pitting one important piece of funding and, you know, over another. And so I think we just kind of wanted to state what was important and what needed investing in and sort of leave the details to the elected officials and other folks. That's, that's what I remember. And, you know, the budget just came out like yesterday or the day before.
Tuesday. Tuesday.
So my, my comment is I have not, I don't feel totally up to speed on what the budget is proposing and kind of how it's different than what we anticipated. So I appreciated Olivia's sort of overview of here's what we're hearing. I also hear Matt, and I put in the link in the chat, a link to a Publicola article that is doing a little bit of, that does do some good framing around what the Jump Start tax, which is the name for the payroll tax, was supposed to fund versus how it's now being used. And a lot of the uses that are being proposed now have nothing to do with the original purpose and intended purpose of the Jump Start funds. And so I first and foremost want to prioritize getting this document passed and approved today. So if it's too complex and too time consuming for us to work through and edit on the call, because I frankly haven't been able to come up with text while being engaged in the discussion. I say, let's approve it and let's just get it done. But if somebody has been working on the fly in some texts, I would be happy to entertain it because I do think it's important for us to know that we are not following through on commitments that we made when we passed this payroll tax. And we are using it to fund things like activities for the forthcoming World Cup, which I'm heart, and some downtown park activation. And those types of activities are not, they're wonderful, but they're not, they're not, I don't think, within the scope of the original approved payroll tax spending plan. So appreciate you raising it, Matt. Maybe too late in the game to get it done, but I'm happy to entertain an edit if someone has one.
Thanks, Michaela. Anyone else have comments or responses to things raised by your fellow commissioners?
Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, I just responded to Michaela.
Yeah, I just um responded to Michaela. I just don't want to lose this chart. I think it's just whether I think it's really important to understand how small a percentage it is relative to the overall budget. Um, and uh so um, but, but by the same token, I, I guess I want to leave it in so that I can do the calculation based on the current budget and see where the percentage has actually gone. Um, the budget is two billion dollars more, and we haven't increased affordable housing or funding for affordable housing more than, you know, I think it was what, ten million, something like that? So uh, so there is, there is a significant gap. Um, uh, but I could um, um, but again, yeah, I um, I, I, I think I don't want to get into the weeds uh too much. I would like to leave as much of this in as possible. Uh, I like the idea of highlighting those sentences. I want to get it out as soon as possible. Um, the longer we delay or, or I should say um, uh tailor this, this document to the realities of the budget or the, the minutia of the budget. Um, the more political it seems, uh whereas the, the intent of this pa- paper is just to uh highlight safeguarding those resources. So um, so I'd like to vote today, get it out, and uh, and we can, you know, sort of follow up.
Okay, I'm um, since we're running short on time, I'm gonna go to Cecilia and then to Michaela, and then we'll close out. It's okay.
Yeah, just going back to Matt's point, and I just kind of wanted to clarify, I, I feel like we should get rid of the sentence that talks about um this budget is maintaining and slightly expanding um funding for affordable housing. I think it also is confusing because most of that is coming from the housing levy, which is like even harder to take when a jump start. But I think this paper and the graph still makes sense, even if we're not um talking about like specific budget pieces um in, in this actual latest budget.
Thanks, Cecilia. Michaela?
Process question first. Are, are we approving this paper today?
I can jump in. Sorry for the echo. Uh, this is Vanessa. Um, the commission doesn't, uh, the commission approves our letters that are put on letterhead and have all of your names on it and are typically very formal responses to a specific city proposal such as the draft comp plan, um, the sale transportation plan, EISs, et cetera. For our independent work, uh, of which this falls under that, um, we discuss our, we discuss it, but we don't take a formal action on it. There, it's understood that this is a cooperative, uh collegial mind meld of sixteen minds with three support, three and a half people trying to support you all doing that. So we don't, our practice has not been to take a formal vote on papers like this. So that can change moving forward. Um, bless you, John. Uh, however, I don't suggest we make that change right now in the interest of time, but we can discuss that procedurally moving forward.
But this is the last opportunity to make any changes to this, and then after that, it's getting published.
Okay.
Correct.
Well, that gives us some flexibility, I think, to direct staff to figure out, take our input and execute something that threads the needle on this graph. Um, I think my reaction to keeping this graph, hearing Matt's concern, reading the Publicola article, taking into account why Olivia was saying to remove this graph, I'm not sure this graph is, or this chart is underscoring the point that the city is getting um millions of dollars of additional revenue, but they're keeping kind of the funding for EDI programs and housing programs somewhat stable rather than proportionally increasing those. And so um, and this is a reflection of the twenty twenty-four budget, not the twenty twenty-five budget. So I also agree with Olivia that I found it a little bit confusing when I read it in the context of the paper. Um, so I would be more interested in replacing this with something that sort of reinforces the point that we are not following through on our commitments to the vision that was established when we passed Jump Start.
Olivia, do you think that you have what you need if you were to replace this?
Um, I think I can definitely take a pass at uh sort of doing the comparison, running the numbers, seeing what the difference is in the percentage. Um, if it's enough of a percentage change to be visible, I think it, uh, we could run with the idea suggested by Lauren to sort of kind of meld the two, right? Have some sort of dotted line that indicates the change. Um, if it's not different enough to, I'm just not sure, like, you know, this is a pretty small chart. If it's only a slight shift in percentage, it might not be much of a visual difference. Um, then maybe, you know, our staff will make a decision about whether to have it be a visual explanation or to move more to a text explanation. But what I'm hearing is a comfort level from most people to kind of make the statement that the city should, you know, maintain the relative proportions of funding going into affordable housing, at least maintain or increase the relative proportions, um, and to make some sort of statement about that that tries to be as accurate as possible to the current budget proposal. Um, so if everyone's comfortable with at least that sentiment, I think we as staff can, can rework this section to kind of make sure that that's clear.
Sounds good. Um, okay, final, final. Dylan said he had promised he'd keep this short, so Dylan, gee.
Yeah, Mickey, yes. Um, just, just reinforcing the graphic is, I mean, I think, yeah, in whatever capacity, whether we are able to update it to get the factual numbers or whether it's called out as the percentage of the twenty twenty-three budget dedicated to um, whether, you know, whether we just call it out for exactly what it is. I think it's, it's still powerful to see exactly kind of where we're at, even if it's a snapshot in time before this budget cycle. Um, great if we can get like update, if we can update it to where the budget is proposed to be, but I think it's important to have this in there because it shows the ratio of uh total budget to what's actually being spent on affordable housing, which it makes it seem small, so it makes the ask seem meaningful for folks to get involved. Second thing, and I realize I'm saying this without, I don't have the wording down yet, but just how to get involved, one, two, three, which are great. Number two, write a letter to the, or email to city council. It's always really helpful just to like have three bullets or two bullets to do, you know, just have a couple of bullets for folks just to like grab and throw into their email. I know we're running out of space here, so I'll let you guys take into consideration with the time you have and what makes sense in terms of not bloating this letter too much. But it is nice to give a little bit of a prompt about what the letter should say just in three points. And obviously, it's what's in the rest of the, of the paper, but it's still helpful to grease the wheels a little bit for anybody that does want to write a letter or send an email, um, just to kind of highlight the three points they should make, four points they should make. Now leave it at that.
Thanks, Dylan. I think, I think this is where we go into a little bit of a gray area because we don't really don't do advocacy or like direct advocacy. So we might, I'm gonna leave it to staff to figure that out, but I will just say like, we may not put it in depending on what they decide, just because this is the first time I think we're really getting into this like direct, like you should engage, and I think taking it into like, you should engage and say this.
Yeah, yeah.
Might cross that line a little, um, but I'll, I'll let, I'll leave it up to staff to decide how to, how to thread that needle. So um, I want to make sure we have enough time for our um commission business, um, because this is really important. The um, the budget is impacting um the planning commission specifically, so I want to make sure that Vanessa has time to talk about that, so.
Great. Thank you, Jamie, and thank you all for, um, I know we're, we're all trying to, we spend a lot of time on this paper, um, in anticipation of a budget that was presented by the mayor to city council in about an hour-long speech on Tuesday, and then detailed in a several-hour presentation from the central budget office before city council budget select committee yesterday, starting at nine thirty. Um, it's a hefty document as, as it should be, and so um, just want to reassure you all that staff here, we are scrambling to uh, to true up what we thought was going to be in the budget with what actually is in the budget. Um, so I do want to call attention, first of all, to an email I sent out last Wednesday, which I can send again, um, that asks all of you to uh think about and send in to me uh the names of individuals as well as groups who you all, who each of you will be willing to reach out to regarding uh and share this, this uh Invest in Seattle's Future paper that we've just been speaking about. Um, as we were, you know, as the discussion was going on this morning, I was thinking about um, what's, how staff can support you all in sharing this paper. And uh at our last executive committee meeting, we talked about um uh staff preparing two sets of speaking points to assist you as you share this paper with your colleagues, organizations, affiliate organizations. Um, one set of speaking points is really more when you're speaking to somebody who's already aware, well aware of the issues. And then the other set of speaking points is really, you know, just to use an example, wh- when you might be sharing this with your book club, um, who might be made up of members who aren't tracking the city budget or, and are urban planners and aren't as familiar with both the budget process as well as the impacts of decisions made in the budget. Uh, some of those comments, um, I jotted down, well, I tried to jot down as many of the comments that were said, that were made this morning, and those can inform uh those two sets of uh speaking points that um staff will be working on to share with you all. Uh, want to make sure those speaking points true up with the actual budget that was presented, so we're still combing through that. Um, in that email that I sent to you all last Wednesday, asking for you to share your contacts and organizations that you would be willing to talk to about this paper, I also outlined the budget calendar and want to bring to your attention uh that Friday, oh, that would be tomorrow, um, Friday, individual departments begin their uh presentations before council, so that's something that again, commission staff is going to be following very carefully, especially the presentation of OPCD's budget, which is scheduled to go before the budget committee tomorrow at two P M. Uh, and speaking about OPCD's budget, I shared with you all um the very disappointing uh and sad news on Tuesday afternoon that um in the mayor's proposed budget, um OPCD is proposed to cut the position currently held by John Hoy, so that is a reduction of almost a third of the planning commission staff. There's also a halftime administrative position uh to the design commission that is being cut and a vacant unfilled senior planner position with OPCD. Um, so this is a big week for us all and a rather emotional one as we try to process all of this. In addition to um advocacy on behalf of the programs that are addressed and the, the general livability and equitable life that vision that the planning commission hopes for Seattle that we're trying to address in our Invest in Seattle's Future paper. I believe there will be also other opportunities to speak directly to um the proposed staffing cut of almost a third to the planning commission. Um, we will continue to talk about this more in committee meetings next week, so please do pay attention. Not that you don't already, but please do read your emails. Uh, we will be sending you a lot of emails with updates on um, on proposed strategy. To speak to these two separate budget issues, um, my suggestion is going to be that commissioners not try to address both of these issues at once because there are different scales. Um, but that we, as a commission, and certainly on the leadership, and of course, everybody is invited to join those leadership conversations, um, that we really come up with a strategy for who speaks to the staffing, proposed staffing cut to the planning commission, and who speaks to the um sharing, investing in Seattle's future. Um, I know I just babbled a lot, and I know we've got about nine minutes left, but I did want to set aside time on today's agenda for you all to ask questions. I will do my best to answer any questions you may have to, A, the best of my ability and to what I know. Um, so if you, if there are questions, please put your name in the chat. And I see Lauren has a question or a comment.
Oh, mostly just appreciation for John. Just want to say how much we value you, and you're like a key part of this community. Um, I remember when you were hired, and I love having you on the commission, and um, I think that it's, it's an easy story to tell that the work of the commission does looks out for the interests of our city at a citywide scale, and your work is integral to that, so just appreciation for you and commitment to our kind of advocacy and support wherever we can throughout this budget process, and just frankly acknowledging the collective grief for me about this budget and this budget process. Um, the mayor is proposing ten million for uh police and cutting affordable housing, and to me, that is um just devastating and um just kind of want to hold space for the grief that um is a part of these policies and the politics that's happening right now, and it really hits home hearing about um one of our commission family getting cut.
Thank you, Lauren. Any other comments or questions about the process? Um, I do just want to reiterate that we are uh, we are staff is combing through the budget and making sure that any facts that the planning commission puts out there are, are accurate and correct, and um it's, uh, I'll just say it again, it's a hefty document and uh really being able to tease out uh what's in the proposed twenty twenty-five budget. In the proposed twenty twenty-six, because it is presented as a two-year budget, council will adopt the twenty twenty-five, and I'm not going to use the right word, but something like ratify the twenty twenty-six budget, which will then be revisited again next year. Um, before I say anything else, uh, I'm going to turn it over to Jamie then Michaela.
Lauren, thank you, thank you for, I, I vocalizing a lot of um, a lot of what I'm feeling too. So I was having difficulty putting words into it, and I appreciate your um just like naming that, that kind of collective grief around um, around potentially losing John, but also like this whole budget process and, and how we are um, you know, they say, they say a budget document, right, is a reflected, reflection of your values, and um, and I think that, you know, with the paper we're working on and a lot of the work we do as a commission, we really try to um, to emphasize and advocate for the fact that, that we need to have those things aligned. We need to have our values and what we're trying to um, the fact that we're trying to make this city, you know, livable and affordable and equitable and have opportunities for everyone. Um, and I think that as a commission, we play such a critical role as stewards of like the long-term, that long-term vision, right? And um, and, you know, we've, we've had the staffing resource um for years, and this represents a significant um cut to our capacity, and, you know, all of us or most of us have full-time jobs that we do this on top of and um volunteer our time, and I will be one of the first to say that I would not be able to do this if not for paid staff being able to take our discussions and then turn that into something that we can react to and um, and who are doing that background research, who are staffing our committees. and, and who are doing that background research, who are staffing our committees, who, and, and John, you've played such a critical role in, in all of our, in all of our ability to be effective in, in the last several years. And so I'm like trying to say this without taking up. And, and I also think like, you know, this is the mayor's proposed budget. This is not like what has been voted into stone yet. And so I also think it is worthy, a worthy discussion for us to have in the future of like, what does it mean to adequately resource the planning commission and to ensure our ability to be an accountability body and an independent advisory body to the city? And what does it mean to resource that? So just floating that for you all.
Thank you, Jamie. I think Michaela had a word or two.
Jamie just took the words right out of my mouth. I don't think I need to belabor the point. So thank you so much, Lauren and Jamie, for both of your comments. Vanessa, maybe I just do have one question for you. At some point in the future, would you be able to report back to us what you think? What impact do you think this will have on our capacity next year and our ability to do work? I think that would be interesting to know. And then maybe you know off the top of your head, but how long have we been at these staffing levels at the commission?
Since 2008.
2008.
So, for a while.
It is hard not to take this a little bit personally, right? At a time when our, we've put forward recommendations on a comprehensive plan. At a time when we can see the city, you know, cutting the kinds of programs that are important to our, our future. To see them sort of cut the legs out from underneath the accountability body that exists there to advise them on decisions. Just if it does feel, I don't know how it feels, actually. There's the, I'm having emotions around this right now, like I think we all are. And John, just, you know, appreciate you. You're a human being. You're impacted by this decision. And we see you and our, our hearts are with you right now.
Thank you, Michaela. In terms of how this might impact, should this, should the proposal go through, I want to emphasize Jamie's point that this is the mayor's proposed budget that will be discussed, amended and approved by city council the third week of November. Should this proposal be, go through, specific to the planning commission's reduction in staff by almost a third, my approach would be to work specifically with leadership in terms of, I can put forward a proposal of how, what I think we'll have to cut. The planning commission has six meetings a month that are staffed by Olivia, John and myself. I'm not sure that level, that cadence of meetings will be able to continue. Certainly will have to be even more strategic, again, should this proposed cut be approved. Have to be more strategic about what independent work the planning commission wants to take on and how that may impact what regular reviews of city projects the planning commission is in a position and adequately resourced to do. So that is a conversation we can start having. I would, because I think it should inform any, any comments commissioners and others may have to city council regarding this proposal. I also want to spend adequate time in strategizing how best to engage with elected, with the city council around this proposed cut. So as I mentioned early, please, earlier, please stay tuned via email as we, as we develop our strategy in real time in response to the budget that was released on Tuesday.
Well, we are at time. Vanessa, did we have public comment?
No public comment. Thank you, Jamie.
Well, thank you all. I know this is heavy news all around. So please stay in touch. We are, you know, it is a proposed budget. We will, we're, all of these things, we're, we're working on figuring out how to weigh in on. So encourage folks to join the executive committee meeting if you want to dive in more on, on that. And otherwise I will adjourn us for today. Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.